Good evening and welcome to the Sixth District Town Hall meeting. I first want to thank each of you residents for taking time out of what I know is your busy schedule to join us today, to hear more about what's going on with the city and for your questions to get answered. For those of you who've attended Sixth District Town Hall meetings before, you know how this goes. But for those who haven't, I'll let you know. We begin the first half of the meeting allowing departments, city departments, who are represented here today, to speak to you about any new happenings in the department or things that you should be aware of and what the functions of their department is. And then the second half of the meeting is where we allow for the questions to be answered. We do have a guest speaker, we have a couple of guest speakers today. The primary guest speaker is Congresswoman Gwen Moore, who will be joining us shortly. Soon as she joins us, she'll have to speak and she may have to leave early because she's supposed to speak at the Capitol today. And we also are joined by Mayor Tom Barrett, who wants to say a few words for you all today. The speaker, the featured speaker is Congresswoman Moore because we are in a moment as we attempt to recover from this pandemic and COVID where at the federal level they have approved the American Rescue Dollars to help us get through it. And I wanted her, as a Congresswoman, to be able to help speak to what's possible with those dollars, how much it means to the city of Milwaukee and in meeting the needs of its residents. Also, we'll have some conversation around that as well when Congresswoman Moore gets here. But I'll turn it over right now to Mayor Tom Barrett to say a couple of words before we get into the departments. Mayor Tom Barrett?
Well, thank you very much, Alderwoman. And it's a, it's a pleasure and an honor to be part of your town hall meetings. I know you've been doing this for a long time and you always get a good reception when you do it. So obviously even in this free world of Zoom, Zoom communication, there are people who want to hear what you have to say. And I think it's because of your leadership and what you've been doing, not only for your district, but for the entire city of Milwaukee. So I want to thank you publicly. I also really, really want to spend a lot of my time, and I'm sorry she's not on the phone right now. We all owe a huge thank you to Congresswoman Moore because what she and her colleagues have done is virtually unprecedented in recognizing the challenges that occur in our communities as a result of the pandemic. And I think many of us are familiar with the checks that individuals are receiving right now. And that is obviously very, very welcome news for a lot of people. But in addition to that, the expansion of the earned income tax credit, the child dependency credits, those, those help working people, in particular, working mothers who have children to make sure that they can get their kids what they need. And we know that this pandemic has treated different people differently. In fact, I've seen some analysis that showed that the top third of those people, of income people actually did better over the last year than they had the previous year. But we know that the bottom third economically really saw some major disruptions in their lives. And that includes a lot of people who live in the city of Milwaukee. So for me, it's, it shouldn't come as any surprise that having the Congresswoman and her colleagues vote to send money directly to the cities is a godsend. It is a godsend. Because what they recognize, and this is very, very important, is that in a lot of states, including Wisconsin, you have legislatures that are hostile to urban areas. And if the money had to be funneled through the legislature, it would be a much different scenario than having the dollars flow here directly. So, so we will receive $406 million. It will come in two tranches, as they are described. The first one should arrive about May 11th or May 12th. So we expect to see a $203 million deposit into our, into our account, May 11th or May 12th. What we are doing right now is we're waiting for guidance from the Treasury Department as to how that money can be used. And we know, for example, one of the things that we're going to use it for, and this is certainly permitted, is for the loss of revenue that we experienced as a city in 2020. There are a number of places where the city is, has the ability of raising revenue, ranging from parking structures to fees, to other, other ordinance requirements. And we're estimating that somewhere between $30 and $50 million will be the loss just for 2020 for, for that money. So, so of the $406 million, in my mind, that's the first place for us to start, is to replenish that, that lost revenue. Other places for us to be working include things like housing, certainly a very, very high priority. The lead issues, and when I say lead, I'm talking about both lead paint and lead laterals. And what's interesting about the lead lateral component of that is in my conversations with Senator Baldwin, she, she feels very optimistic that we will get a lot of funding through the Jobs Act for the lead, the, the lead pipes. And so that sort of colors our timing on these things. Evictions is a big issue for us. We want to make sure that we're helping people stay in their homes, issues like broadband. I've been working very, very closely with others at the city and with the school district. And I know this is an issue that, that Alderwoman Cogs cares about a lot as well, to have us expand broadband throughout the city of Milwaukee. There's an affordability issue. And in some parts of the city, there's, there's only one plan and it's not the, what I would call the, the most accessible plan in terms of, of what people need. So we're actively working on that. We're working on childcare to see how we can funnel dollars into childcare for early education and childcare to deal with a number of issues, including quality childcare, but also doing what we can to raise the wages for people. And again, primarily women who are working in childcare. So, so I could go on and on and on and on and on, but, but I don't think that's what the Alderwoman had in mind. But I'll be working with the Alderwoman, who has been incredibly responsive, to see that we can match up our priorities. And I'm, I'm optimistic that many, if not all of our priorities will, will line up together. So I'm going to cut myself off there, Alderwoman, unless you want me to keep going, but I'll turn it back to you.
I will say that the full council has made it clear and the mayor has been amenable to our request to make sure that we have engagement, not only of council members, but also of the community. So I believe you will, over the next several weeks, see various ways that the city will be attempting to engage you as residents as we learn more about the guidelines for the federal dollars that we will be receiving to help us prioritize, you know, how we will eventually be spending these dollars. Additionally, the full council has supported it and let the mayor know and he has been amenable to making sure that we look at the distribution of the money through an equity and inclusion lens. We really want this money, this once in a generation of money, to have as great as impact possible on the city of Milwaukee. And with that, you know, this money wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for, you know, Congresswoman Moore and so many of her colleagues who saw fit to help cities, just like ours, get through these very hard times. So I have invited Congresswoman Moore to come forward just to tell us a little bit about these American Rescue Dollars. And I thank her for taking time out of her busy schedule. I'll have some other departments talk just so that we, you know, fill the time until she is able to join us. So we can first... Okay, while you figure that out, let us know once you have figured that out. So the first department that we'll hear from is the Department of Neighborhood Services. Code Enforcement, I believe?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Alderwoman Cogs. My name is Kristen Reed. I am a supervisor within residential code enforcement. Have been in Alderwoman Cogs District for a number of years throughout my tenure with the city. So always excited to be at her meetings. DNS is pretty much business as usual at this point in residential. We're focusing on cleanup sweeps throughout the city. Obviously, with all the snow melt that came and throughout the course of this winter, we had a lot of trash that kind of got covered up. So we're working very diligently to get all of that cleaned up. A lot of cleanup orders are being issued weekly. We have temps that have been brought in to help with that as well. We also have, are doing our annual fire inspections and our usual interior, exterior, things like that, all of our animal things. As always, Cleaning Green is also going on at this time and Cleaning Green is where residents can put a number of, quite a number of trash, larger than they normally would be able to do, and be able to get that cleaned up by DPW for free. I'm sure they'll speak upon it if they are here as well. As always, if you have complaints, 286-CITY, and we are happy to assist.
All right, thank you. So if you have Department of Neighborhood Services questions, please drop those in the questions piece and we can ask those during the second half. So next up, and for those who want to follow along on the agenda, recently, given the verdict in Minnesota last night with the Officer Chauvin case for George Floyd, I have introduced legislation at the city for, for the city to take an official position in support of the Federal George Floyd Justice and Policing Act and for our intergovernmental relations to lobby for its passage. That act has a lot of the reforms that the community has asked for to happen, whether it be change in training, independent prosecutors, money for alternatives to policing, community policing efforts, and a variety of things like that, all under one bill. So in honor of the loss of his life and in an effort to ensure that we don't have this continue to happen, I've, I've asked my colleagues and we will be voting on taking an official position and support. I say that to you too, as we are about to hear from Congresswoman Moore, because I know that she's been a strong advocate as well for the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act as well. We have the Department of Public Works, Electrical Services. If you wanted to go ahead?
Thank you. Mark McCray, Electrical Services Operations Manager. Our department handles streetlights, traffic signals, street signs, and line painting, as well as maintaining the city's own communications network. Major things, we're currently working to upgrade most of our circuits so that we have less outages, which everybody knows has been a problem. And we're upgrading large portions of the city to LED lighting to cut down on energy costs and increase efficiencies, also increases light output, if anybody were looking for an example. We did a fair amount of that on Capitol Drive, on Port Washington Road, and on Keefe between Richards and Port Washington. If you have any issues, I'd encourage you first to call 286-CITY. One thing we'd like to point out, we do not turn streetlights off for, just to save energy. So if you see something out, call us, please. I'd rather see 100 people call than no one call and you end up with your lights out for several days in a row when we could have had them repaired for you. Otherwise, I believe Acua has a handout there with some more, more, our office contact information. I believe my email is on there and my direct office number.
Thank you. Next up, we have sanitation.
I'm getting ready in there.
Okay.
All right. Hello, my name's Alan Kerr. I am the area manager for Central, the central area of the city, for the Department of Sanitation. We handle garbage collection, recycling collection, the street sweeping as it begins. Right now, we're in heavy sweep, which means that we have more of our sweepers on the street. So with that being the case, we appreciate you parking exactly where you legally can park so we can get to the other sides of the street. We're also concluding our alley sweeping, so we're slowly moving through alleys with the debris and garbage that built up this winter because of the snow. The alleys have been excessively, excessively dirty. So we are trying to get through the alleys one by one. The Cleaning Green has started. Alderwoman Cogs, your area was the first one up. If for some reason you feel that something wasn't picked up, please feel free to give us a call at 286-CITY and let us know that something may have been missed. We know that there was limited communication on this one and it came up fairly quickly for some individuals. So we're always willing to make sure that we can try and help and clean some, clean areas up. The other aspect is that we're still doing a massive amount of cleaning because there's a large, there's a proportionally large grouping of illegal dumping happening in the city. If you see it, call. Because it's, we can only report so much of it and someone has to be seeing these vehicles as they drive, drive down alleys and just dump debris that's there. We don't want these communities to be dirty. We work every day to try and keep the areas clean because a clean area is a healthy area and a healthy area is easier for everybody to live in. So we really want to help and get these areas spiffed up and cleaned. And if there's something that you physically need cleaning-wise, that the sanitation handles, again, 286-CITY. My name's Alan Kerr. If you want to reach me, I'm in the email. That's it for sanitation. I don't have anybody from forestry, but we're currently, at this point, cleaning up the boulevards and working on the beginning of the pruning season. So that's the beginning as well.
We'll just add to the cleaning piece that this week is Earth Week. So there are a lot of neighborhood cleanups going on. I know tomorrow in our district, there's the Haram Bay cleanup, which I believe is starting at 11 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, at Pete's Market on King Drive and North Avenue. And I know this weekend, there's the Beer Line cleanup, I believe. All that information, we'll drop in the chat the times and locations for the neighborhood cleanups we're aware of. But please check out your neighbor, local neighborhood group to see when and where their cleanup may be. Additionally, next, we have the Department of City Development.
Hi, my name's Aaron Halt. I'm with the Neighborhood Improvement Development Corporation, part of Department of City Development. I'll be speaking on the existing housing programs that we run at the city right now for residential rehabilitation. As part of the mayor's Strong Neighborhoods Plan, we have a number of programs that we operate at NIDC. And Strong Homes Loan Program is a low-interest loan for essential home repairs. We do everything from, you know, roof and structural issues with the porch, painting, siding, interior repairs, leaking pipes, that type of thing. We provide technical assistance. We help you with underwriting that loan and portions of those loans are forgivable. We also have some programs that we partner with the city tax-foreclosed in REM properties that are available for sale. We have a homebuyer assistance program that we provide forgivable loans for rehab for individuals purchasing a city property for homeownership. We also have a rental rehabilitation program that we allow for landlords, responsible landlords, to purchase properties and invest in them to get them up to par and then rent to lower-income tenants. And those are forgivable matching loans for, for the rehab of those properties. We also have community engagement projects that we work with, a lot, actually quite a few in the Sixth District. You'll be seeing a lot coming up soon regarding some vacant lots around the area that are going to be transformed into parks and healing spaces as a partnership with the Beta Philanthropies. And all of this information can be found on our website. We can be found at cityofmilwaukee.gov/NIDC. You can also call 286-5610. And then also, we, we would like to connect people if you're having trouble making your mortgage payments due to COVID through Milwaukee County and Housing Resources Incorporated. You can call 369-6914 to get some help with your mortgage payment. Yeah, that's it for me.
I really want to give thanks to Beta Philanthropies for the healing spaces. Last budget, I passed a budget amendment that afforded the opportunity, because you know, as we deal with this pandemic, a lot of us have been in the house and as we recover from it, it's a lot of healing that's going to have to happen and kind of readjustment to, to being amongst each other more. And these spaces are just one small way, neighborhood by neighborhood, to help bring people together and also to help heal. And with the funds provided by Beta Philanthropy, it's allowing for that program to be piloted in the Haram Bay area. Applications are flowing in. I think, I don't know if the deadline has already passed. If it hasn't and you're, you live in a Haram Bay area and have a city-owned vacant lot near you, you may want to apply because you might have some ideas of what could go in that space. Additionally, there's also the CIP grant, the Community Improvement Program Grant, even if you're beyond the Haram Bay area, but your neighborhood group or block club may want to do a neighborhood project. With the CIP grant, they match up to $4,000 for a neighborhood project. So those are all things that are also on the website for NIDC. I have the honor of sitting as a board member with NIDC, so I'm very familiar with a lot of the programs. We even have some specific programs for Bronzeville, if you choose to buy a home in Bronzeville. Could you speak a little bit to those programs? I think it's three different ones.
Yeah, it's, I'm unclear as to how much money is left in that account, but there are a number of programs that we run specifically in Bronzeville. Bronzeville, I believe the geographic boundaries that we have are from the Palmer to the highway and up to Burleigh from, from North Avenue. And so we, we partner our homebuyer assistance program with some Bronzeville. So you get, instead of $20,000 forgivable, you get $25,000 forgivable towards rehab. There was an appliance package for new purchasing of city foreclosures, but I believe that money is exhausted. Oh, on the spot, Alderwoman Cogs, I can't think of the third program in...
It may have been Down Payment Assistance or something like that.
Right, Down Payment Assistance, which, yeah, we did move to the Target Investment Neighborhoods.
Yeah. So additionally, I just want to add for those interested, we are beginning to put out RFPs for a variety of mixed-use or commercial existing spaces. And you will soon see more RFPs in our district for some of the vacant land as well. One of the properties that people have a lot of interest in that we are currently receiving RFPs for is 1937 North MLK Drive. In fact, next, on the 23rd, we will be having a question and answer session with representatives from DCD for anybody interested in submitting a proposal for that building. It is currently on the market for $80,000. But there'll be more in the coming weeks as well. It's at noon on the 23rd and we can drop in the chat the link if you're interested as well. With that, I think that's what we can cover with DCD. But next up, I think we have the Police Department. The Sixth District is covered by both the First District and the Fifth District. We're predominantly in the Fifth District, but there's a small portion of our district that is covered by the First District. So I believe that we are, have representatives from both, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll let District One go first. Do we have a representative from District One? All right, go ahead.
Thank you for having us, Alderwoman Cogs. I'm Sergeant Sodowsky. I work at the First District and like Alderwoman Cogs mentioned, we do have a small area on the northwestern part of our district that does cover. So normally at the town halls, we like to just kind of mention some of the crime that's going on in the area and then some of the things that are going around in the downtown neighborhood. So for crime, we had four thefts reported. One of them was from a vehicle, so we try to always message that. We don't leave valuables in the car, especially in plain sight. We have three auto thefts, two of which were Kias. And something we've definitely at District One been trying to message through our Facebook website is that Kias and Hondas have been predominantly targeted, especially this year where they're being stolen at a very high rate. Sometimes in our district, eight to 10 times during a date, we will respond to somebody who's obtained one of those vehicles or is attempting to. So we're definitely messaging, if you have the means to get a club for the vehicle, possibly have a kill switch installed, just anything that can kind of prevent. If you can't, if it's possible, maybe park indoors or underneath in a well-lit area. But we are working on the police department's side to try to get more club donations so we can give them out to people that have either been victimized already or that might own those vehicles and can try to prevent some of those things from happening. Good news, we didn't have any burglaries and we also had zero robberies. We did have aggravated assault. It appeared to be a domestic dispute in which it looks like an individual, after an argument, fired a handgun that did not strike the person and that person was found on scene and taken into custody. As far as things going on in the area, obviously, as we try to hopefully slowly but surely start moving away and getting back to a little bit more commonplace, the Milwaukee Bucks are hosting games again. So we definitely welcome people in that safe manner to come back downtown, maybe enjoy a bite at the Tanna Bucks game. And perhaps as early as mid to late summer, the Avenue, former Grand Avenue Mall will be opening up with the food court, they expect, and could definitely be a really, really great way to come down and enjoy some of the things that downtown has to offer.
Thank you. And do we have District Five, a representative from District Five with us? Is there a representative? All right, I'm not, I'm not seeing a rep. So we can go to... Well, we also have Dennis Jacarino from the Budget and Management Office, who is, you know, one of the primary folks that'll have to deal with the, the Rescue Dollars and also very soon the budget as we deal with it. So we've asked Dennis to come so that he can also speak to the Rescue Dollars. And Dennis, maybe you can also speak to some of the engagement efforts that the administration intends to have with residents to gain some input as well.
Sure. First of all, there's many more dollars available to the state through the feds as well as the direct payment to the city. There are housing dollars, infrastructure dollars, other dollars that are, that are being spread to the state. There's also rent assistance, eviction-type assistance, and those fourth that are going directly to the state that we're hoping to tap into, much like some of the dollars that you might have seen already, going to rent assistance, emergency rent assistance. We, we want to keep those programs up and running, but we want to also maximize our dollars. So if we can get them from other sources other than the $400 million, we want to get them from there first so we can maximize other things that we can do in the city. We do expect, like the mayor said, the money in early May. May 11th, I think, is the statutory deadline that's in the bill. We expect about $203 million to come as our first payment and then the second payment will come after a year. What the administration is working on is, is a number of things. We're working on a website that will provide a number of things. One will be a survey to get input from citizens so we can see where individuals like, would like the money to be spent. We will also be having town hall meetings. Don't know if they'll be in person, but likely virtual meetings to cover a lot of the city. So look for those coming up. Those, I hope, will be posted on the website and a lot of communication so you're aware because we would like a lot of turnout to really hear what everybody would like the one to be used for. The other piece, though, is after we do make some decisions on, on how we would utilize the money, we do plan to be very transparent with what we're expensing. On that same website, we will, we will be putting on the expenditures, hopefully as close to real time as we can, to show them by, by program or, or project that we're trying to address. So you can see where the money is actually going and how, how much we're spending on everything. We will also have a plan on the budget of what we plan to spend and also show you where the progress has been made to show you what's been spent already. Those are some of the big... Uh, those are some of the big uh sites that we're looking at. As for the dollars themselves, the mayor mentioned that we're still awaiting uh specific guidelines. But the general guidelines for the funds are to use them for uh COVID-related items or anyone affected or things affected uh economically by COVID. So those, those could be a number of things. Uh, right now, we're hoping it's, it's a very broad uh explanation of, of that. Our guidelines will be very broad, so we could use them uh wisely. I think uh one of the things that we have talked about are streetlights. That was mentioned earlier, the outages. We do understand the city has had a problem with, with uh lighting outages. And we'd love to use this money to improve our lighting system and provide more uh reliable lighting and also at the same time make it much more efficient. So we can do a, a number of things, make your neighborhood safer, uh but also perhaps save the city some dollars. Uh, so those are some of the things that we're, we're looking at. As soon as the guidelines are available, we will also be putting that on the website uh and, and getting that message across to, to all of you. So you can see where the money can be spent, so you can have uh uh input into those expenses.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, so while we're uh still waiting for the Congresswoman, we can start the questions. Um, and again, if you have questions, please drop them in the questions box. The first question is, are there legal resources for people who have not been able to receive their P U A unemployment benefits? There may be discrimination occurring in the five-three-two-oh-six um zip code. Um, and all of the panelists from the city departments, you can turn on your cameras, um, because the questions are going to be very. I mean, you may have to come on and answer them at any time. Um, so does anybody have a response for that one?
Sure, I, I can tell you right now, the Office of Equity and Inclusion is looking into the unemployment data. Uh, I'm not sure if they'll be able to uncover the, the specific uh issue here, but they're looking at it from that standpoint. Have, has anybody been uh negatively impacted or is there some inequity issue? So I can tell you that, uh, we can get you more specifics. Uh, uh, you, you, we can follow up with the Alderman uh with those specifics.
For whatever additional information is received by our office about the questions that are asked tonight. Uh, for those of you who registered to get in tonight, we will forward all of the additional information we received beyond tonight. Um, back to the list of folks who registered for today. Um, the second question, are there any funding resources to assist homeowners with delinquent property taxes? I believe the representative from Aaron, I think you spoke a little bit to that maybe earlier.
Currently, um, N I D C is not running anything for delinquent property taxes. Um, in the past, Habitat for Humanity did have um a small fund, which I'm not sure that has um been uh re-upped for this year. Um, there has, there's another anti-displacement um fund, but that's specific to assessments. Um, and the hope is that uh, and I, I don't know any of the details, but there are some gaps in, in our housing um plans at the city and potentially um, um, there may be something that we can do with the rescue dollars, but currently we're not doing anything with property taxes.
I, I can tell you, there's a specific amount that was set aside in the bill uh for homeowner assistance. It, it helps both with the mortgage and delinquent taxes. Uh, the money is funneled through the So I, I'm not sure how much the city will actually get, but we will definitely contact the uh the governor's office and try to get our share, fair share of that money as well.
And I, I'll just try and that's something that we've started to look at to see what dollars, if any, we think there might be some that might be able to be used for delinquent property taxes, but we don't have a definitive answer. And that's one of the challenges we have right now. Um, we know when the money's coming, but we expect a lot of the deadlines to come literally the day before or two days before. That's not a criticism. It's when we expect to get the guidance from the
And I can also tell you, the mayor uh in his priorities does have housing as one of the the top priorities uh of use of the money.
I will say, last year, um, we were able to I know the treasurer requested that the governor allow for an opportunity for us to not collect the late fees that would normally accrue if someone wasn't able to pay their taxes in a timely manner. Um, and the state did take that up. They did allow for municipalities to decide or counties to decide for themselves. Um, so Milwaukee County took it up and we as a city voted to from the months of May to September of last year, um, not, not, not bestowed the penalty for the late fee for taxes. I'm on there. So that was one small break for some um homeowners that we were able to do last year. Um, and just as we creatively found that, I think we're continuing to look for ways um to try to get some relief to um property owners and hopefully through the ARPA money, there may be um some way. Uh, the next question. How can we ensure that those federal dollars don't go to bailing out the unsupported and failed streetcar expansion? A project also seemingly in aiding the gentrification occurring in our district. Um, I'll let the mayor speak and Dennis speak to um the streetcar. But what I will say, I know that because our district, um, you know, borders downtown and because of the level of development that has happened in and around the area. Um, many of you residents in the last three years in particular have witnessed a very uh, uh, uh an increase larger, larger than um the rest of the city um in your taxes. And for some, there are concerns about gentrification and displacement. I will say that I have been a proponent of us as a city, um, making sure that for as much as possible, we prevent displacement of folks, um, and you know, as projects and development are done. As a result of that work, there has been a anti-displacement plan that the city has created. And there have been several different pieces of legislation that I, Artemis Stamper and Artemis Perez have fought to make possible. One of the ones that are most direct um has been the anti-displacement fund for those who live in the impacted area and meet the requirements to be able to um access funds provided by the private sector and the philanthropic community to help defray the cost of the increase on their taxes. That fund has been in existence for two years. Um, uh, this past year, well over a hundred and eleven residents were able to take advantage of that fund. And on average, they received about a thousand dollars in assistance to pay down um their taxes. We continue to look for solutions. We also have a citizen um advisory committee on anti-displacement to work together to find solutions, to fight against gentrification that causes displacement. Um, so I'll allow, it was specifically speaking about the streetcar. So I'll allow the, the mayor and Dennis to speak to that. Please know, you hear stories about gentrification displacement in other cities where the city is complicit um in helping push people out. Please know that, you know, we are fighting really hard for that not to happen here. We recognize that it's the people in these neighborhoods that helped build these neighborhoods. And we're not trying to push people out. At least I'm not. And I know my colleagues, we literally voted for stuff to help to prevent that from happening. Um, but mayor, if you had any response on the streetcar?
I'd be happy to address that and thank you very much. Um, when I look at the streetcar, obviously, I think all forms of transportation have um been hurt severely, whether it's our, our county bus system or the streetcar. Uh, the ridership on the interstate is down over the last year with the pandemic, so it's no surprise. Um, and it's no surprise around the nation that public transit systems um have suffered because of this. It's just literally for months, the, the ridership was limited severely and most people were not going to office and they weren't going out. Um, so it's, it's no surprise. One of the things that did happen, though, um, in December in Congress is they changed the allocation um requirements for local projects like the streetcar. Um, prior to December, the, the funding mix would be sixty percent federal, forty percent local. In December, in one of the acts that Congress passed uh dealing with they dramatically changed that so that any dollars now are going to be eighty percent federal and twenty percent local. So what does this mean? This means that we have an opportunity to take advantage of this funding stream. Um, and, and I don't rule it out because I think when I look at transportation in the city, um, my approach has always been all of the above. And when I say all of the above, it, that means putting money into streets. It means supporting the expressways. It means putting money into buses. It means supporting um bike share programs, um, actually supporting scooter programs. Um, obviously, the county bus system uh a, as well as the streetcar. Because I think, I think the vibrancy of a city is determined in, in part by how easy it is for individuals to get around. And we actually did an analysis, um, and I don't remember off the top of my head if it was the top thirty or the top forty cities in the nation as to which communities have some sort of fixed transit. Um, and when we did that analysis, the only two cities that didn't have a fixed transit system uh other than Milwaukee were Wichita, Kansas and Fresno, California. And I have nothing against Wichita, Kansas or Fresno, California. But when I look at the cities that we're competing against, whether it's Atlanta or Cincinnati or St. Louis or Seattle or Minneapolis or Denver or Portland or Seattle, all of those communities have some sort of fixed transit. Um, so I look at this and I look at it as an opportunity. In addition, and this is, I think, very important. Um, we are not only dealing with the Recovery Act, but we are dealing with a significant infrastructure bill, a jobs bill that President Biden has introduced. Um, and we anticipate we'll go through Congress hopefully by the Fourth of July, certainly by the August recess. Um, there will be a lot of money in there um for programs like fixed transit. Um, and so we want to be aggressive, whether it's the recovery dollars or, I mean, sorry, the recovery dollars or those dollars to go after. One of the things that, that, that I think is beneficial particularly, um, when it comes to the Jobs Act that is relevant to what the Alderman woman was saying in terms of displacement. In the Jobs Act that President Biden has introduced, there is a special fund in the bill he's introduced for communities that have been divided by expressway systems that have had that damage done to them because of expressway systems. I had a conversation with the State of Wisconsin Secretary of Transportation Craig Thompson about this very provision last week. Um, and he felt that this provision, if it stays in the bill, we don't know where it's going to. This would be a provision that I would think the people in Alderman Cogs, uh Aldermanic District would be probably one of the most likely to benefit from this. Because clearly, we know I forty-three um divided her district uh when it was built. Parts of it before she was born, but it, the, the lingering damage is still there. So, so that is something that I'm intending to look at as well. Um, and finally, I just want to say that we work closely with the Alderwoman and the other members of, of the common council to, to have this displacement fund, because just as the Alderwoman doesn't want to see the displacement and doesn't want to see individuals particularly on fixed incomes hampered by rising property taxes, that's, that's a concern that I
Before I go to the next question, I will add this. For each of the allocations of these funds, it will have to be um voted on by the council. Um, and I'm voting on by committee and approved by a council and signed by the mayor. So whether it's money for the streetcar or money for the streetlights, um, as we expand the funds um from the rescue dollars, it will be public hearings that will take place, just as they do for all the stuff we vote on. Um, where the community has an opportunity um to weigh in on whether or not they think we should be spending it. Um, so please know that whichever issue is of the greatest importance to you of where we should or should not be spending the money, there are public hearings, there will be public hearings about all of it. Um, the next uh question is uh, the next comment was, we need to provide more funding to get COVID-nineteen vaccinations to seniors. They must be included in the outreach program. Is, do we know if um the rescue dollars, if any of it, is dedicated to um getting a vaccine to seniors? Or could be used for that?
Absolutely, yes. And in addition to that, the state has announced that with its three-point-two-billion-dollar allocation, it's going to devote five-hundred-million dollars of that towards pandemic, um, pandemic issues. Um, we are aggressively, and, and I'm actually glad to have this question. Um, we are aggressively looking for opportunities um to bring the vaccination to the community. And just to give you an example of this, um, we have at the Wisconsin Center, um, which is all town, obviously not in the neighborhood, the capacity to do four thousand shots a day. And we are doing roughly two thousand shots a day. Um, and to put that in perspective, I have a daughter who's um about to finish up her education at the University of Minnesota, and she was trying literally for weeks to get a shot and couldn't get one. And I was saying, come home, come home, because we have, we've got capacity. Um, and so we are very eager to work with any community group to get shots in people's arms. So if, if anybody on this call has a group, please contact Aaron Sapinski or Marcy Patterson in my office, and we will work directly with you, with the Alderwoman, with the Department of Health to get those shots in people's arms, particularly seniors, but others as well of it. We've worked very closely with the churches, with community groups, um, and we want to make sure that people choose to get the vaccination. Obviously, it's their choice, but we want to make sure that people who want it can get it.
Thank you. The next question is, when will the representatives listen to and honor the residents' wishes to defund the police and their systematic racist operations and put funds to impactful, community-based programs? Um, for the last couple of years, I think there have been major community efforts um to get us to look at funding the police department um less than they currently are funding. Because Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the police department takes up about forty-six percent of the operational budget um of the city of Milwaukee. Um,
Budget, yes.
The general fund budget, of the general fund budget of the city of Milwaukee, making them the largest departmental consumer of those funds. Um, so I think we've heard loud and clear from residents, uh, whether you love the police or hate the police, um, just with the amount of money um that is being given to them, that how do we survive financially if we continue to fund at that level? Um, I think as Alderman, we continue to look at ways um to be able to um spend less with them. But a reality that we're all dealing with is that, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Dennis, or you might know the exact percentage, but of that, you know, nearly three-hundred-billion-dollar budget um for the police department annually, what is it, more than eighty-five percent is salaries, wages and benefits?
Yeah, it's, it's ninety-five percent salaries and
Um, so it's, um, so when you began to talk about, you know, unfunding things or taking money away, I think um the greatest savings is had uh without legal recourse, because let's not forget they have unions and there's agreements um and all of those kind of things is um what, actually what the mayor has been doing the last couple of budgets, which is, you know, as officers retire, not filling um each of those retirements. Um, because the biggest expense is the salary and wages and benefits of um of those officers. So as we um, as we, and, and the city has, um, two years ago with sixty officers, we didn't um, you know, put back, and this year was a hundred and twenty um that we didn't um put back. So the city has done some major cuts to the police department, but to the level and extent that some residents may want, I don't know that that will ever happen if we're going to have an honest conversation about it. And quite honestly, all residents don't feel the same. Uh, for all the calls I get about um the people wanting to defund police, we get a lot of calls and emails with people wanting more resources for police. I think the commonality is people just want safer communities. That's what they ultimately want. So a greater investment in So a greater investment in prevention is something I fight for every budget and many of my colleagues do as well. Alternative to policing, whether it's on mental health issues or other non-violent offenses or things that occur that we often call police for and trying to figure out what other things could be utilized so that the feeling of the need for more officers is not as great. It's something that I know Alderwoman Lewis, Alderman Coggs, is, a lot of us are working on and have passed legislation to get us closer to. And I think in the coming years, you'll see even more of it, because a lot of this stuff is being worked on. But if I'm honest, I don't know that you'll ever see a complete defunding of the police. We are studying different models. I know in Camden, they got rid of the whole police department and then made people reapply and hired them back. But Camden is much smaller than the city of Milwaukee. But please know that we recognize the financial issues with financing the police at the level that they are. Whether you, again, whether you support police or not, we all have to admit, it's some financial issues there. And we also recognize and prioritize the safety of residents. Many of us have different ideas about how to attack both. But that's a continual conversation, continual discussion. We continue to look at solutions and work with the community on those. So you have my commitment, that I'm committed to the two on that. And just for the record, for my constituents, it's not a budget year that goes by, and Dennis can attest to this, that I don't try to find at least some amendment where we can shave a couple of nines off of what, off of what we're giving to everybody. Historically, it would have been a. Yes?
Alderwoman Coggs, this is Gwen Moore.
Oh, you're here. You're here.
I am here. I have no idea where you guys are at in your agenda, but I am here.
So we're. You're right on time. You're right on time. Let me just introduce you. Are you on audio or are you on?
I am. I could, I could not get into that webinar. I'm on audio only.
Okay, let me, okay, no, this is great timing, Congresswoman. Earlier, I was letting the residents know that we asked you to join us today because of your, you know, fight for this, the American Rescue Dollars for American cities to help us recover from this pandemic. And I know the mayor publicly thank you for your efforts to ensure that Milwaukee got its fair share as well. But the $1.9 trillion that has been delineated for cities of the 400 and about $5 million that we'll be getting, just wanted you to speak more to that. And what's possible, and you know why this is important for residents.
Well, thank you so much, Alderwoman Coggs. I want you to know that we've worked very, very hard to make sure that cities and states got some of this money. As you know, this package was held up for months and months and months because the then majority in the Senate could not count in it providing monies to what they call blue cities and blue states. So when what Joe Biden came in, I mean, he was very brilliant because he knew that there were southern mayors of towns and southern states that needed money and put pressure on him to provide the monies for city and state. And not only is that happening, but I want you to know, Alderwoman Coggs, that the city of Milwaukee and Milwaukee County have put monies in for earmarks for, for things that, to supplement what has been received in the American Rescue Package. I do know in my conversations with the mayor that he has really got his eyes on really critical stuff that needs to be done. He's thinking broadband, lead pipes, those kinds of things. But I want you to know that in addition to that, I'm using, we're probably going to bring back earmarks after 10 years of not being able to do that because of politics. And I am focusing in on the transportation and infrastructure bill to try to make sure that we deal with the $700 million worth of lead pipe work that we have. And not only that, but I want that to be a nexus between our opportunity to engage the labor community, to be able to engage the Workforce Investment Board so we can provide training and jobs for people. If we're going to have, replace these pipes, there's absolutely no reason that we can't train up people to do this work. Because it will take years and we can provide a pipeline for work. One of the problems that I had with the package that we did with Obama is that we were always talking about quote unquote shovel-ready projects. And so I am really making an effort here as your Congresswoman to put an amendment, I've testified before the Transportation Infrastructure Committee that I want an amendment that is similar to one that was adopted in the HUD statutes way back in 1968, which no one ever paid attention to, requiring that some of these monies be used to engage community members in taking advantage of the work. But I want, I want to make sure that people like Alderwoman Coggs knows that. So when they come out, they can, you know, they can ask, what's the plan to engage and train some community members? The state and local government, there's also other things that, that are not necessarily going to state and local governments. But you'll have agencies like the Community Development Agency, the Social Development Commission, CAP Agency, stuff like the community, community advocates, agencies like that that will have an opportunity to get some of the monies that we have provided for, to prevent evictions. One of the things I had a nightmare about every single night was getting evicted out of my apartment. And I asked somebody, what do you think it means? It's a way, it means what it is, what it is. These people, you scared of people getting evicted? And I have been very worried about that. Because there are like 4,000 eviction notice sitting right there in the sheriff's office, ready to be executed without any further legal litigation, you know, needed. I'm hoping that people use some of the $1,400 per person and their family to catch up with back rent. But in some hardship cases, the landlords, especially people who live in just two family homes, will be able to, to apply for relief. You know, they have to get the cooperation of the tenant. So that's an extra layer of concern, but at least that is yet another option. One of the things that I really wanted to talk about was the child tax credit. And by the way, we're going to have to work very, very hard because there are millions of dollars that we leave on the table by not applying for the earned income tax credit and the child tax credit. Now that it's, and we have done something very special this year. This year, we expanded the child tax credit to make it totally and completely refundable. I remember when I first got up here, Rosa DeLauro had just introduced the child tax credit, the term before I got here. And she was running around trying to get me to be a co-sponsor of the child tax credit. And I finally said, you know what, Rosa, sounds like a lovely idea. I'll co-sponsor it, but I'll tell you the truth. I don't know one daggone woman in my district who's going to benefit from this. You know, you have to earn $20,000 before you can even get the first dollar of the credit. We have made it totally, completely refundable. What that means is that even people who don't have any income liability, who don't even work, will be able to get up to $3,600 this year, this year. We haven't made it permanent this year, you know, for children, children six or under, $3,600. And for children over six, $3,000. I mean, literally, we, you know, if you've got two kids, that's $7,200, even if you didn't work. And you need to go to the workshop or, or something, you know, there are agencies, and I'm sorry, I don't have them listed right this minute, Madam Alderwoman, but we need to make sure people apply for the child tax credit. We're also, we put in the bill, and by the way, this is, I know a lot about this because this is one of the major things that came out of the committee. I stood on the Ways and Means Committee. Like this $1.9 trillion, half of it, $971 billion of it came out of our committee. And the child tax credit is like the crown jewel of what we did. And we're going to try to make, we, this bill cuts poverty for African-American children in half. And that's so important for children in Milwaukee because, you know, you've heard the hype that, you know, this is one of the worst places in the country for African-American children. So this is so critical. Also, the earned income tax credit. We have made the earned income tax credit available to people who are single and have no children. And we've lowered the age down to 18. They had it at, you know, 25, and that was ridiculous. We've lowered it to 18. I have bills in the Ways and Means Committee to do other things with the earned income tax credit to, to really raise the benefit level so that we can get single people who make as much as $40,000 a year, which ain't no money, and $2,021, eligible for it, to make students eligible for it, and to make people who are caretakers of their relatives eligible for the earned income tax credit. But it's critical that, I mean, we need to do it every day. Use our ranking privileges, whatever else, to get people, just to come hard on this, like we are the vaccines, to file for the child tax credit and the earned income tax credit, even if they've never filed the taxes before. Those people who didn't get their stimulus, we don't even call them stimulus checks, they're just rescue checks, who didn't get the economic impact payment check, they can apply, they can, again, go get their taxes done to try to recover from last year and this year. So like I said, we're leaving millions of dollars on the table if we don't reach out to our constituents and let them know this. Let me see. I guess I could talk a little bit about, oh, yes, childcare. I mean, this, of course, because I was in a meeting today in the Ways and Means Committee where we talked about childcare again. And I told people, even though I'm 70 years old, I'm still, I still have PTSD behind trying to figure out how to have adequate childcare for myself and my grandkids and have them safe while I work. We have a total of, we have $40 billion in relief funding, $15 billion to support families and providers, you know, including needs of essential workers. And $34 billion for childcare stabilization funds for eligible daycare providers. So if there are daycare providers out there, you know, you know, change been strange and money been funny, and they've had a hard time keeping their businesses open, we want to call their attention to this. You know, and also, you know, I alerted some of the beauty shops, barber shops, restaurants. You know, our PPP stuff that we had done initially went to some of the larger companies. But I'm encouraging people to look at grants and monies that they can get to put the Plexiglas in the daycare centers and to, to, you know, to create the environment that they would not be able to afford to have. I mean, encouraging people to seek relief in that way. Healthcare. This is really, really important. You can stop me anytime you want to, Alderwoman. I'm just rambling on now.
Alderwoman. Go ahead.
Okay. I can go on to talk about healthcare, really important things that we have done in healthcare. You know, as you know, because Scott Walker didn't accept Obamacare, totally political purpose, there are 90,000 people in the state who, who would be eligible for Badger Care the way we had it before. Were it, for Obamacare, were it not for them rejecting the expansion. And 10,000 of those people earn, you know, a penny over 133% of the poverty level. So I just want to let y'all know what that is, the poverty level. That's about $17,000 a year. It's nothing. There are people walking around, working every day, working like a dog, earning minimum wage. And they are not eligible because we did not expand it. This is unacceptable. And so I want you guys to support the governor's budget to expand it again. They don't want to expand it because they don't want to give Governor Evers a victory. And I'll just give you this number. There's like $1.3 billion we're going to leave on the table for not expanding it and the inability to cover 90,000 more people. Same thing with SNAP, formerly called food stamps. As you know, you know, the state is going to lose $70 million every month because the Republicans dismantled the, 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 well, the emergency orders. I mean, I'm not blaming it on the Supreme Court. They made an interpretation of what Republicans have done. And so this is a situation, just to put it in context, where maybe a single elderly person was getting $16 a month in SNAP. We, they were getting, up until this month, till May 1, they were getting $207 a month in SNAP. Now they're going to be, they're going to be, that's going to be reduced under the emergency, the lack of emergency order, back to $16 a month. Those are kind of key things. And I will, I will yield for questions. And, and I will yield to you, Madam Alderwoman.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Akula, I'm going to ask for your help with these questions. If you could, I will want to bring to the top any of them that are about the ARPA money while we have the Congresswoman so that she can, let me put my camera on, so that she can help navigate through any of the answers for those specific ones. I know we have a variety of questions on different topics. We just make sure that I'm not, that we maximize her time with us today.
I was determined to get in some kind of way.
But let me say, thank you, Congresswoman, for joining us here today. And thank you for your advocacy for each of us. I also know that you recently, in the last few days, celebrated a birthday. So I want to say happy birthday to you as well.
Thank you, my lady. Thank you. I can't wait till I have an in-person opportunity. I still owe you a pescatarian meal at the harbor. I ain't forgot about that.
Right.
We're going to have a big food.
Of course, of course. I do also, for the tech person, Bobby, I see in the comments that Captain Feldmeyer from District 5 is with us and has been with us this whole time. He's having difficulty with his microphone and camera being seen. So if there's a way that we can work that out so that he is able to speak as well, that would be great.
I'd be more than happy. I don't know, I don't see him in either column. That's, that's the problem. Is he, is he in under a different name? That would be the question.
In the questions, his name is listed as an asker. So I'm guessing he is registered somewhere under his name. So Akula, are you seeing any specific ARPA questions? Because I'm not.
I don't know if you answered this one or asked this one already. How can we ensure that those federal dollars don't go to bailing out the?
I asked it already. There is one, there is one that Congresswoman and maybe Dennis, you might be able to help with. Um, there is one, there is one that Congresswoman and maybe Dennis, you might be able to help with. Um, with these ARPA dollars, um, are funds allowed to be allocated towards transi- transitional jobs?
Well, that, that is exactly what I am working on. I mentioned it before, you know, with my testimony before, the, the TNI Committee, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, actually, that's part of the appropriations process. But, uh, there, there's a lot of flexibility with these dollars. Uh, and, and the frustration for somebody at the federal level is that we do all this work and send the money, and it depends, and you guys gotta make sure you get it. That's the reason it's in this town hall meeting, Alderwoman, this is, this is, this is what you need to do. You know, and you know my, my phone number and my office number, I mean, find this money and, and put your finger on it so you can call town and say, hey, I see that you got X number of dollars allocated to this, a- a- and I've got a, a plan or a project for it. Because once the dollars leave here, you know, w- 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 we don't have any control over them anymore. And, you know, people like my colleague, Sheila Jackson Lee, who's walking out of this door now. She's from Texas, and she complains mightily about how our earlier cares packages were sent off to the red state of Texas. And, you know, places that Republicans didn't like just didn't see it. Um, I think that they have tried to, to figure that out this time. The other side of that, you know, that I have a problem with, is that in an effort to get money out fast, I hope this money doesn't get out fast, they always choose these so-called job-ready projects, shovel-ready projects, which means that you don't have the flexibility to try to, to, you know, connect with the workforce investment board and to create something new. And so we, you know, Jean Spurling, who is heading up the, uh, ARP funds, really, th- they really are gonna take some risks, uh, with, uh, hoping that people will expend the money judiciously, because they're not putting those kinds of, of tightrods around it where you can't be flexible with it.
So Congresswoman, another question. Can any of this money be allocated towards Black maternal health in the city of Milwaukee?
Oh, my God. Let me, uh, I'm not on the Health Committee, but you, you know, you know I have a bill. Uh, because, uh, because, uh, we, we've got maternal and infant mortality that rival war-torn country. Um, and so I have a bill in the omnibus bill, uh, to provide, um, uh, more support. But with regard to health, um, we have, we have focused mostly on COVID, shots in arms, um, we have focused, uh, on COBRA, uh, people who have lost their insurance. Um, and COBRA, of course, costs a fortune, and so there is a hundred percent subsidy for COBRA. Uh, we've expanded, um, but like I said, created a greater reimbursement, and if the governor would take it, that would really help with maternal, uh, health. Um, and I'm trying to see if there are any thou- I'm, I'm digging through my papers now.
While you're looking for the answer, Congresswoman, I will say to the residents who are watching, in honor of, you know, Black Maternal Health Week, last week, myself, Alderwoman Dodd, Alderwoman, um, Lewis, um, put in a file requesting that the Office of Equity and Inclusion work with the Health Department to examine the programs and initiatives and projects of the Health Department, um, to see what we're doing to address, um, Black maternal health issues. Our goal is to look at what, taking inventory of what we're already doing so that we can look at what more may need to be done to help address, um, these issues.
Right, well, uh, you know, like I said, most of the stuff in, in the ARP deals with expanding Medicaid, uh, you know, creating and, and opening, um, an extension of time to apply for the Affordable Care Act, uh, not so much a direct, uh, allocation for health issues. Uh, but it seems to me that some of the state and local relief, Milwaukee's gonna get three hundred and seventy-two million dollars. Uh, and of course, the county is gonna get a hundred and eighty-five million dollars. Um, and, um, you know, so if there are healthcare needs there, if, if, if you, if, you know, like if you see something the Health Department can do, like I know when I had my first child fifty-one years ago, I had no idea how to even put a diaper on it. And, uh, it's the truth, and I mean, I stuck her with a pin. And, um, the, the visiting nurse came and showed me how to put a diaper on it. Um, so, you know, if you see ARP dollars and this is a need, you know, you, you say, look, I know you got three hundred and seventy million dollars, and we need to give some of this to, to the Health Department. Um, because there is no other quote-unquote line for that.
Okay. Um, I see, just a sign, now there's a question about the expressway and what's being done, uh, for, to ensure that the repairing is only repairing, that it's not an expansion of the expressway. I will say that we...
Yeah, that, that's the Transportation and Infrastructure Budget, that, that's not part of the ARP, but, uh, I'm aware of those, uh, uh, of those, uh, you, you know, of the community not wanting, uh, a, a major expansion, but that is a, that's a transportation and infrastructure issue. And, uh, a- and it's, it's something you have to fight with the state legislature too.
Yeah. And I know here at the council, we've had to weigh in on some of the expansion of the, um, the next phase of, um, I-94. And under the leadership of Ottoman Baum and Ottoman Murphy's, whose district would be most impacted by the saw expansion, and the residents of Story Hill and the adjacent neighborhoods, I believe the council voted, um, to not support, um, the, it being expanded. There's, we supported the repair of it, but not the expansion of it. Um, but again, that's a DLT issue.
I see what my priorities were in expanding it, I did not put that in. I got feedback from y'all, it was not a priority of mine to expand that.
So yeah, but ultimately, this DLT is gonna make that decision, but the city D O Y.
Right, right.
If you excuse me, we, we voted not to support an expansion. Um, another comment, somebody said, we support the streetcar. I guess to give balance. Um, uh, um, it's just another comment about trying to use the federal dollars to support local, um, efforts of residents as opposed to tourism-based, um, things.
Tourism?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know what, one of the things that I appreciated is that, my God, who knew that gig workers were, were essential workers? Who knew they were even human beings before the pandemic? So there is money in this bill to help bars and restaurants. Um, that is not exactly the question, uh, but it, it, it recognizes, you know, the help of these kinds of businesses that we have called essentials, uh, uh, as of late. You know, who, you know, who, who'd have thought it a year ago that we, that, that there would be any federal dollars flowing to a bar or to a restaurant? So, uh, you know, I, I would look at, at those dollars, see where they're going, and see if it, it figures into any of my, you know, any of my, my plans, uh, to, uh, you know, if, if you're, you know, say if your bar is on a, uh, is, is, uh, is, you know, part of a tourist thing, I mean, you know, if you have a, a bar, for example, that is, uh, that, uh, is, uh, 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 you know, as tourism occurs, people are checking in, I mean, you might, I'm just gonna name a bar, Five-O-Two. You know, they, they say, look, you know, we're a bar and, 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 and we're part of the tourism industry. So I would think that a lot of our businesses in our community, you know, say for your, up a yard or something, you know, and say, you know, we're the, you know, we're Jamaican food, and, you know, we're, you know, we're a tourist attraction, and so we need some of the money. People need to be creative.
Yeah. Um, well, I wanna, um, thank you again, Congresswoman Moore, for, um, for talking with us about this money. Um, and I just wanna make it clear, it's a resident's part of the reason that I, you know, I asked Congresswoman Moore to come, um, and why the mayor was here, and why we have Dennis here, is because I, again, this is some once-in-a-generation uh, money that we'll be receiving, and it's important to me that residents be as knowledgeable about it as possible, and that we hear from you all about what our priorities need to be as we spend it within the guidelines. So like I said, in the coming weeks, you will hear about different ways you can be engaged, from surveys to public meetings, and ways that you could weigh in. And please know, um, that, you know, my number, my email, um, you, you can call me, you can tell me, you can let me know what your priorities are, because I think it's extremely important to how we...
Alderwoman, I, I, I promise you that I'll say it to, um, you know, uh, because like I said, there's, you know, you, you made an excellent point, just the once-in-a-generation investment, and we can't squander it. We gotta, we gotta make it work for everybody.
Definitely. So thank you, um, thank you, uh, Congresswoman. I'm not gonna keep you any longer, the majority of the rest of the questions are, um, related to ARPA. So, um, again, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for your patience.
Appreciate you. Um, as we wrap up here, I'm gonna try to, um, you know, rapid-fire through a couple of these questions, um, and comments. Earlier, the question was asked about help, uh, with mortgage payments for homeowners, and Habitat was mentioned that they used to do it, um, but they may not anymore. Um, in the comments, a Habitat representative, I believe, did say that they, they are doing it again. And if you look in, uh, questions, their contact information is provided for any resident who may need it. Um, additionally, it was a question asked about, um, is it possible for there to be some, um, arrows for turning put at, uh, Locust and, uh, King Drive? Um, currently, there is some work that DPW is doing, um, to look at how to slow traffic on MLK Drive. We have had some public meetings about the different things, from restriping to having fewer lanes, um, that could be done. Um, Locust is, um, one of the intersections that is a priority. Um, we will make sure that, um, DPW is aware of the requests by residents for, um, for exactly what you asked for. Um, let me see, what else we can get through quickly? Uh, is, is the First District Police Department still with us?
No, he left.
Okay. We'll forward the questions that didn't get answered today to the appropriate people.
All the way to the guys, Sergeant Stodowsky's still here if you needed something.
You are, okay, yeah. Um, how can, uh, residents who owned, okay, they asked the question, how can residents who own the cars targeted by these obtain a free club from MPD? What do they need to do to get the free club?
So MPD, at least right now, I can only speak for my district. I know some of the other districts through, uh, nonprofits and community groups have had some donated, and then it's been as simple as contacting that district and going in and obtaining one. Um, right now, District One only had a small supply that was donated, uh, to us through a couple of community partners, and we just messaged that, um, out through checking on previous victims and trying to get ahold of them to see if they were interested in it, and messaging it on our Facebook. So as of right now, I can speak for District One. We don't have clubs right now, but we are working to try to get clubs. And then once we get them, uh, we'll probably be messaging that, um, through either our PIO's office or through our Facebook site, that we have a certain allotment. Um, and I would definitely recommend that to anybody who's in attendance or watching this. Monitor, uh, the Milwaukee Police Department, each of us have a different Facebook page. Uh, so depending on what district that you're in, um, you can look, and they might have those options available for you to actually go pick up a club, uh, if they might be available.
All right, thank you. Um, that's gonna be our last question. Again, uh, we do have the questions written. Um, we will get answers for all of the questions that were asked, and provide them to the entire group. Um, beyond, beyond it. So even if your question wasn't read, um, it doesn't mean you won't get an answer, um, to it. I also wanna remind people, um, that there is a cleanup, a RAB cleanup tomorrow, um, at eleven AM to three PM at Pete's Fruit Market, twenty-three, twenty-three, um, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. There's also a beer line cleanup, um, this Saturday, um, as well. Um, additionally, so there are a variety of great things happening, um, in the district. And when we send you the answers to the questions, we will also, um, let you know about any of the upcoming, um, events. I will also take a moment, um, to say congratulations, um, to the new county supervisor that also overlaps a portion, um, of our district, um, County Supervisor Priscilla Coggs Jones. Um, she will represent, has been sworn in to represent the tenth county supervisory, um, district. She replaced, um, Congresswoman Moore's son, um, Supreme Moore Omukunde, Omukunde Moore, who is now a state representative in a special election, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, lastly, or one of the last things I wanna say is, you know, a few years ago, myself and Ottoman Stamper worked diligently with police, Safe and Sound, and residents to try to develop something that could help residents deal with, at the time, what was a major issue, which was car-to-car drug sales. A proactive way that neighbors could attempt to rid their neighborhoods of it. Um, so we developed the Alert Neighbor Program. And we spent the last year or more working with neighborhood groups and the Police Department and Safe and Sound on strategically placing, um, cameras, lights, and signage in organizing neighborhoods. Uh, fifteen neighborhoods were selected for a pilot program with the Alert Neighbor Program. I am proud to announce that next week, um, May, the first week in May, um, neighborhoods, um, will first be getting to get their cameras and their lights and their signage. Um, hopefully, um, we'll have safer summers.
First be getting to get their cameras and their lights.
It is our hope to measure the success of the program, the impact on neighborhoods. And if it truly has an impact, uh, we would love to expand it to additional, um, neighborhoods. I know some of you who are on today are in some of those fifteen neighborhoods. But as of the first week in May, we will begin the distribution of those cameras, lights, um, and signage. Um, again, I wanna thank you all for joining tonight. We'll have other, um, town hall meetings, and I want you to save the date. Um, August seventh through the fourteenth is the tenth annual Bronsville Week. We will have it, I don't care what the COVID numbers are, um, we will have it. Um, it'll probably be a hybrid, um, of both virtual, and if, um, it is safe, uh, we will have some in-person events as well. Again, thank you all, um, and thank everybody for joining us, all the city employees, the mayor, the Congresswoman. And I look forward to continuing to talking to you all about how we spend these rescue dollars. Have a good night.